Order the December 13th meeting, regular meeting of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District. Let the record show that Directors Brown, Kramer, Norris and French are present. Director Sexton could not be here tonight. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion that you accept the consent agenda?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tina?
Aye, sorry.
Opposed? Okay. Consent agenda passes. Josh, do we have any signers from citizens present for agenda or non-agenda items? We have one comment from Suzie Henderson. If you'd like to approach the, speak clearly into the microphone so citizens at home can hear what you have to say.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you might pull the microphone down closer.
I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Bill Sexton, who is the Chair of our Special Projects Committee and could not be here tonight. So I told him I would do the deed and make sure that it is put into the record. You know, as you know, we did our ribbon cutting ceremony for our aeration project, which was a long time, a lot of effort by a lot of people putting that all together. It's all complete and working and amazing. So we just want to make sure that all those people that helped make that happen get their credit. So I'm going to read a little list of the people that have been involved in that project because it's not just one or two people that put that thing together. It's a big deal. So I'm going to start with the list. Tom Wood, Josh Brainard, without you guys, and I know Tom's not here tonight, but hours and hours of effort, we know. The Lincoln County Road Department, the Lakes Sabres and John Tucci, Pacific Power, Morris Excavation, Greenlight Electric, Clinton and Janet Gates, the Celestes Tribe, the Spec Committee, the Floating Feather Catering and Starbucks. All those people were part of putting all of that together, including the ribbon cutting ceremony day. And B&amp;X Sexton Construction was also huge in helping. And then, not to forget Dana Moore and Mary Ellen Rich, who baked the cookies for the ribbon.
Good cookies.
Without all those people, and I know we're probably leaving somebody off, it was, including you guys, what a project, what a task. And so it's so exciting, it's all happening and it's working beautifully. And I'm going to add Julie Sexton to that. She's not here tonight to tell me not to, but she is amazing with her efforts that she puts in that no one sees. And without her, I couldn't have done one-tenth of what we did to put that together. So thanks to all those people.
It was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Suzie. Now we'll move to unfinished business, committee briefings. Do you want to recap the sewer committee meeting?
Sure. So we had our first sewer committee meeting in several months. I don't remember when our last one was, June maybe?
I believe it was about June.
Because we were waiting on this document, which is the Sewer Service Financial Evaluation White Paper. And Civil West Engineers put this together for us. And we had a draft of it at the November meeting and went back to them with just a few clarifications and they had a final to us right away. We've had it three weeks?
About, yeah.
So this went to the sewer committee a few weeks ago and we asked the sewer committee to review it and come prepared to talk about it tonight. There was Myles Schlesinger and Brian Green were the two committee members present. And then we had a couple on the phone, I think Tim and Irv Potter.
Right.
And the biggest topic of discussion is where do we go from here with this and how do we get this information in the hands of the affected property owners? And we, Steve and Kent were there tonight as well, just as citizens at large. But in a nutshell, we've asked the sewer committee to get together. Dick Anderson, that is a citizen at large on the committee, he's not a committee member but has been really faithful in helping us with connecting the city with this project. He was not able to be there tonight because of another meeting. So I think our hope is, is that the January meeting, we get a little bit clearer idea of what it is the sewer committee envisions doing with this. If there is a special sewer district to be formed, who does that? And I think that that's where this board needs to have a discussion and the sewer committee needs to have a discussion on, because I don't think that there's a consensus within the committee on what the next step is, so.
And what the board's role.
Right, and what the district's role is. So I think that's about it. It was a fairly long meeting, but a lot of just conversation about that. And with people on the phone, it is difficult to have too good of conversations, so hopefully we'll get better representation at the next meeting.
Right. Yeah, it would be nice if we could get all the committee members sitting there around the table in person and that way I think it's easier to contribute.
So I think that's as good as I can give you.
And we thank Civil West and everyone's efforts that.
It's a great report.
Yes.
Especially when you have Josh make notes in it for you.
And it's, it gives an accurate depiction of what it would take to put in a sewer system around the east side of the lake and what the costs, the real costs will be. And so, given this type of system, so.
Chair, comment. So is that report available to the public at this point?
If anyone in the public would like to see it, I don't know why not.
Can we put it on the website?
I can post it, no problem.
Yeah, I think it should be. I mean, it is in final format and we've all had ample time to look at it.
Yeah, and so the district had paid for that report with some support from a grant that we got in addition, right, from Celestes Tribe?
Correct.
Benaya Breath.
Yeah, and Benaya Breath also contributed to the cost.
The report is very, very detailed. And what I really enjoyed about the report was the detailed steps on where you go next. And I encourage the sewer committee to really look strongly at those steps. And I'm looking forward to meeting with them or having them come back to us next month. But yeah, it's definitely in the best interest, long-term, to get the whole lake sewered.
Yes. Any further comments about that? Okay. Special projects and events and communication. Again, Bill Sexton wasn't here. Suzie Henderson gave us a quick, quick review. Bill also dropped off notes to me. So I have some that he'd like me to share with the audience today and the committee. First of all, a lake cleanup. I believe a road cleanup has been scheduled for the east side, East Devils Lake Road, on May 7th at 9 o'clock. Again, we'll meet at Faith Baptist Church. We'll clean up the east side of the road and look to have a hot lunch prepared, I'm sure by Julie Sexton and Bill, at the state park at the end of the cleanup. We're also, so if you're interested in joining with that, I think in the past, we've had about a dozen people help. And we're always looking for more. Last time, we had a few new people and instead of seeing the same faces out there, it'd be nice to see some new people too. So if you're interested in helping keep the roads around Devils Lake clean, get ahold of that, of our committee and find out more about when that cleanup is, although it is May 7th at 9 o'clock. And then in the fall, normally, we do a fall cleanup of West Devils Lake Road. So that's on schedule. He also would like to share that he's talked to the Sheriff's Office and they're looking at putting on another boater safety clinic again this year, sometime in June. The dates haven't been set yet, but they are looking at doing that again. That was successful for both the Sheriff's Office as well as the district last year and helped identify where boaters are doing good jobs of having everything prepared for them. But it's not just boats. It's everything from stand-up paddle boards to kayaks and it's not just motorboats. So they'll take a look at it. And I know that in the past, their goal is not to give out tickets, it's to inform the public and help them to be as safe as possible. So that's scheduled for sometime in June and we'll let you know when that is. Lastly, he, we'd like, he'd like to announce that the Airstream Pro is, has been taken out of commission. And it will be placed in the lake sometime in February. The date, or the date hasn't been set, or the place yet, but Blue Heron Resort has indicated that they'd be willing to put it at their place again in February, so.
Is it not going to Crystal Lagoon or wherever?
Yeah, we're waiting on the electrical hookup at the Crystal Lagoon site.
Oh, okay.
And then after that, we're planning on maybe getting it over to Indian Shores as well.
Okay. So that's out of commission. And those are the few things he'd like me to, to share tonight. Save Our Shoreline and Water Quality Monitoring Committee? I know we haven't met, but I'm sure there's information to be shared.
Well, we're going to have a meeting, 3:30 before the board meeting in January, so then we'll meet. But we have scheduled, thanks to Josh contacting Susan Barnes at ODFNW about the Western Pond Turtle issue. And she has agreed to come for a workshop on March 9th from 10 to 12. And I got Kathy's agreement to go to lunch with Josh and Susan and me, to take her to lunch. She also suggested in her agreement to, for the March 9th, she said, "March 9th works for me. I'm not sure how big your group is, but what about potentially partnering with Lincoln SWCD and/or the Mid Coast Watershed Council?" So I wanted to get your take on, is that a good idea? And what is the Lincoln SWCD? Do you know what that is?
That's the Soil and Water Conservation District.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea.
I can, I can, I have their contact, I can get ahold of them. And I also have the Mid Coast Water Planning Partnership, have a meeting coming up with them soon.
Yeah, we could invite them to the, to the workshop.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. And thanks to Susan Barnes, who suggested those people as partnering with us. She said she's, well, Josh, do you want to expand on what she said she would come down with?
Well, she, she's willing to bring some live and not-live specimens, so we can handle them and see them, kind of see the markings and what to identify. And also, she's going to inform us about some of the challenges they're having right now in raising and propagating the turtles in captivity, which kind of leads into the natural environment and preservation of their habitat as well.
What time, March 9th?
March 9th from 10 to 12 at the usual workshop place at Oregon Coast Community College.
Cool.
All right. So we'll do a workshop every year. And we'll be meeting, the committee will be meeting in January to just plan that workshop. Have two-month lead on it, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh.
And also, I plan on contacting her and Josh, I was going to talk to you and I forgot to on Monday, about converting the floating gardens into a potential, if she thinks, habitat or resting place or sunning place for the Western Pond Turtle. And I'm hoping that when she brings down some specimens, she forgets to take them back.
Oh, no.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mary Ellen. All right. Next, we have a report from Josh on projects and operations.
All righty. The Conservation Aeration Project is going very well. We haven't had any issues at all with the system. It's definitely cranking a lot of oxygen out there in the lake as we desperately need. We have had the fence constructed around it, which looks stellar. It's great, it keeps our equipment safe and it keeps people safe as well. There's been some additional, due to a couple of citizen concerns. We did add additional soundproofing to the fence, as we had considered we may do and we first planned it. But it turned out very well. I went back out there again with a sound meter and it knocked it down a few more decibels. So it's, it's about as whisper quiet as you could hope for. And I believe, I talked with Steve earlier in the week when we were discussing it to see, about maybe just putting a couple of boards or something on the top, just to check it out and see, because we may be able to make that almost completely silent.
Yeah, I talked to Bill also on that. You know, he has scrap stuff. And just put it up there and take a measured reading again to see if it makes any difference because ultimately, we want it to be as quiet as it can be. So Bill said he would do that.
Is there any issue with not enough airflow if we put a roof on?
No, I really don't think so. The only time that they've ran into those problems with these type of systems of compressors are places like Colorado, when you have really hot, dry summers. And then even if there is any kind of concern, we can add extra ventilation to it very, very easily along with some sound dampening. But we have a pretty mild environment as far as temperature is concerned, so we should be fine.
Yeah, and to clarify, that plywood wouldn't be a permanent thing.
Right.
It would just, we don't really need to spend the money to build a roof and not have it affect anything. So it would just be for measured readings.
A test.
A test, yeah.
One of the questions I had, Josh, I go by there almost every day, and I know we're supposed to have some informational signs. What's the status on those that are going to go up both there and maybe at some other places around the lake?
I do believe we have some signage up there already. Yeah. The ones that Julie did, are we putting additional signage on or?
I thought we had another sign that was going up that was more informational. And so I'm just wondering what the status of that was. I'm almost positive we had another sign, there's supposed to be two there. A replacement sign for what had been there and then an informational sign. So I'm pretty sure she put together something like that and I just didn't know if there was any status on that.
Okay. I know what you're talking about. The signs we have up, I was just there today and I took a picture of it. We have the lake map sign up there and then the notice, the safety sign, which we needed to get posted. But I think you're talking about the one that's like the how it works?
Right.
Yeah, I will get with Julie and see where we are on that. I, I haven't seen them yet, so she may have not ordered them up yet, but I'll give her the go-ahead and get those up.
All right. Great.
Also, I am working on something to put over the manifold at the shoreline as well, just to deaden the sound down on the water. We haven't had any real concerns or anything, but once again, just like Steve's saying, with getting the top on it to see just, you know, how good we can make it for, you know, not any great extra expenditure, so.
Yeah, and just another thing in meeting with Bill before he left, being in contact with Tucci, they have a way to program the compressor to power it down a little bit. And on his other projects, he's doing that, which not only uses a little bit electricity, but it also lowers the sound volume of it without affecting the result out in the lake. And so as soon as Bill gets back from his vacation, he's going to do that programming to get it down where Tucci has done the other ones. So I'll be anxious to see the difference in that too.
And along the lines with the heat and that particular equipment too, and conversations with John with Lakes Sabres, we're running that at such a low capacity that it's not even generating the kind of heat that those things can take. So, you know, with that roof and that option, we probably shouldn't, really should not have any issues from what we know. The video project is coming along. The weather has been kind of hampering me to try and get up the ladder on the side of the pole there and install the couple of other electrical components, but they are in, we have them. I spoke with Jim Dewey yesterday. And as soon as we get a hold on the weather, I'm going to go do it. He just had his ACL done on one knee, so my, so now I've got to go and do that with him telling me how to do it. So that is in progress. The Airstream Pro Shoreline Aerator, we did just kind of, Kent gave us a quick update on that. It's out right now, being maintenance, as it does yearly, tightening bolts and lubes and things like that. It's been working beautifully, by the way. We haven't had any issues, especially with the regular maintenance. Then we do plan on getting it over to the Crystal Lagoon area soon. Noel has mentioned, of course, we can bring it back up to Blue Heron Landing, which is great because we already have power taps there. And then we're going to get it over to Indian Shores as well. I've got to speak with Bob, the HOA manager over there, and kind of figure out the location and hookups and everything. So we do have a few locations on tap for that program. The D River Devils Lake Sediment and Debris Control Program, which is quickly becoming a flood control program from the amount of research that I've done, I found another report in our archives that was written in the 90s that also refers to the options and issues that the lake has had as far as the sediment building up down there, storm debris and things that have just been going on naturally, you know, since the beginning of time, we imagine, or since the lake has been the lake. As soon as I finish evaluating that, I'm going to try and get the Army Corps to the table or go to them and set up a meeting or meetings and see what kind of options or involvement they may want to have in that program or project. Maybe they can point us in the direction of some more professionals and some people. Because what we're looking for in our conversations, from what I understand, is we want a recurring long-term solution. We're not necessarily looking at just getting rid of the sand and clearing it out. We want to be able to get rid of the sand and clear it out every time that the sand comes, since it's that kind of natural event that we're dealing with.
Just a quick information, if you didn't know already, in a week from, I think a week, in a week it is, we have four days of king tides. And then, and then the next two months after.
Well, and tomorrow, we're supposed to have 30-foot surf.
Right. The next two months after that, about the 20th of the month, so in January and February, we have more king tides. So we need to be aware, kind of keeping an eye out down there of what could happen with what happened last year. And I just think that we're, we're set up for more and more issues with that. The sand has really gotten deep and then I hope that Kylo's and those businesses and stuff down there, down there don't experience what they did last year.
Yeah, if you want some Hallamac, get to Kylo's before the, the king tides come, just in case.
And they're like at 10:3.
Oh.
So I think, I think Bill and I looked at the tide tables today and for four days in a row, they're, you know, twice a day at 10:3. And then, and then, then next, in January, the same thing, and then in February. So they're, they're high tides.
All right. Very good. To keep an eye on those.
So Josh, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So the, the plan of attack on this is rather than being maybe a little simpler to go in for a one-time thing like what we were doing, you're trying to gather more stakeholders and more.
Support and.
Support and, and evidence that this needs to be similar to the permit to the west side.
Correct. And going through the archives and these reports, and there are hundreds and hundreds of pages of things, and some, something like 10 or more options they had proposed, all the way from the 70s up into this 90s report that I'm into now. So they seem to be the man with the plan, for lack of better terminology. They're familiar with the lake. They've done so many diagnostic studies, stream surveys and things. So in order to not repeat all those things and all that work, going through everything with a fine-tooth comb as far as what has been done and then bringing it to the table and say, "Okay, here we are." You know, who, who is still maybe even involved from the 90s or who did this get passed off to? Whose responsibility is it to communicate with us about these issues? Because with the US Army Corps essentially in charge of operations and removal and fill in that area, and that means that they are also the people to talk to when there's an issue.
So is it your understanding that at one point in time, we, we had a permission or a plan, before permits were required, I'm assuming? There was a, some sort of memo of understanding or whatever that we could periodically remove? And then that stopped or?
There hasn't been anything standing like that and it even becomes a little more complex in the fact that some of the earlier reporting, the Army Corps said that they had no right whatsoever there to manage that. And then in later reports, they do. So I'm trying to find out at what point did, okay, who's regulating it? You know, is, is the Corps actually still regulating it? And that's certainly our assumption, since we have permits through the Corps for the emergency removal of debris when these things happen. So it's really, it's kind of a beast as far as what's happened. And what happened through all those options previously, it wasn't a permit, it was one of the about 10 or so options, and that was periodic debris removal.
And we just did it.
Well, yeah, and we just did it. And there were less regulations at that point in time, from what I've seen. So we could do things like have Devils Lake Rock blasted out with water jets. Well, now, there's more heavier regulations, especially now that the lake has ESA-listed co-host salmon in it. We cannot do those things because of fish passage and other regulatory reasons and concerns. So our periodic debris removal became pulling logs off to the side was all we could do and essentially do nothing for the sediment itself. And that is kind of where we are now, is it's, it's those 20, 30-ish years or more since we were not allowed to do the sediment removal.
And is sand in the same classification as sediment?
It's really just kind of another broad, general term. Excuse me. Sand kind of relates to a coarser grain material, usually.
So if you, if you can prove that the, the sand that is on the east side of the dam is from the beach, does it make any difference that it is not actual sediment?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I'll double-check though.
And I believe we.
Because that came up in that pre-permit meeting that, that I went to.
If it was like a native material.
Several years ago, if, if it's material that belongs there versus being transferred from the Pacific Ocean to there.
Yeah.
Well, and I, and I think that they've done, we historically have done tests on what's there and it's benign material, so.
Correct.
There's no concerns, environmental concerns about it.
Right, but they, yeah, they made us test that it was actually sand. That's why I'm asking, because we did do the, whatever department that was, I don't remember which one it was, but they came down to test that it was truly sand.
Probably DEQ or something.
It wasn't DEQ, it was the geological.
Oh, USGS maybe?
Maybe.
Yeah, could have been.
Anyhow.
Yeah. Well, we, you know, definitely look into it, of course, and as a matter of fact, the beaches are classified as sand-starved around here.
Right.
So if we could get the sand back out to the beach where it belongs, then, you know, two problems for one. But of course, that's our, our challenge.
I mean, sometimes it's, with this type of stuff is terminology is everything, so.
Absolutely.
So Josh, I have a question. So as you've dug through the archives, you've found this, are you done doing the research now?
Not completely. I'm still going through the last 90s report, but next week, I will be calling the Corps to get some meetings on the book.
Oh, okay.
To get their take on it and start the back and forth.
Answered my question even before I asked it.
Oh.
So.
As soon as they'll talk to me, Steve.
Yeah, exactly. Well, at some point, yeah.
Yeah, you'll call them, but will you talk to them?
Start the process, yes.
Any, any more questions on? The water quality in the lake has actually been outstanding, once again, the few times I've been out. And granted, now, the boat has been pulled out of the water, it got too rough for it. So that's been pulled out and winterized, out, stored out at the yard. It's been outstanding. Dissolved oxygen levels, according to the XO, have been, have came back in the colder waters. Even before I pulled the boat out, I went right at the end of November, right before, November 29th or something like that. It had, it had all popped back, you know, we didn't have any more zeros on the bottom. At that point, the algae had already started to dissipate and I went out from the shore visibly in some of the canals and areas here this past week and I have not really seen in some of the canals and areas here this past week, and I have not really seen any algae whatsoever in many of those spots that have been problems, even the past few weeks later on in the season here. Out at the Sandpoint Compressor Spot, it's some of the most beautiful water I think I've ever seen. You can see the exact color of the rocks, you know, and, and not even a hint of algae in, in that location. So, coming from just a few weeks ago, having a little bit of that filamentous green algae, which is natural and not harmful, to straight, clear water is, is definitely a good indicator. And the fact that it's, it's correlating with what we're seeing with our equipment, and, and the dissolved oxygen has, has popped back up as well. So, we're in a lot better shape than a lot of other mid-coast lakes who are experiencing similar problems.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Questions from the board? New business from the board?
Oh, I had something on old business, or renewed business.
Okay.
I just wanted to report on the Angels Ball, our tree. I wanted to thank Mary Ellen Rich, Susie Henderson and Julie Sexton for helping get donations and decorating the tree and getting, buying the tree. We had quite a few donations that Josh and Julie got from different businesses, for mainly presents underneath the tree. We got $1,500 for the tree, so it was a nice donation to the Angels Anonymous. Also, Bill Henderson and Tom Rice helped decorate, so, thank you.
Any other new business?
Go ahead.
We are, just so that everyone knows, that we're currently in contract negotiations with our lake manager. And for his new contract, which has expired, I'm sorry to say, and we don't have one, a new one in place yet. Josh, I, I hope that as we go through this process, and you know that as we eventually settle on this contract, we'll, and it's of no fault of yours, it's actually of ours, that you'll, in, anything that needs to change will be retroactive, just so that you know that, I'm sure that's the case. And, and we, do you or Steve have some information that you want to share with the board?
Yeah, so, one of the things, when we met, if you guys wanna take that, there's one for each of ya. Looking at the old contract, I, I think myself, I can say for me, I had some concerns about the contract as far as it meeting not only state but federal regulations, and what the content should be, and whether or not even the contract was written by an attorney. And I had recommend that we have an attorney prepare his contract, not only for Josh's benefit, to look out for you, but to also protect the, the district. And so, we had contracted a few years ago with an attorney in Newport, and come to find out, he's retired. And so, we were looking at other options, and what I brought before the board here was some information on a attorney firm in Salem, and the information about the firm. It's a very large firm. I can tell you that my corporations has used them several times. Their areas of expertise is very wide, and I believe it would be a, a good fit for the kind of contract that we wanna produce.
Have you contacted them about our needs?
No, I wanted to share, but I do know, like I said, from my personal experience with the firm, that employee-employer relations is, they have a whole department on it. But, again, I just think it's, we need to end up making sure that the contract is right.
Legal.
Well, legal.
Not right.
You know, I, I, there's nothing worse than, you know, I look at the contract, and I'm not saying it was a bad contract. I, I felt that it was more of an agreement than a employee, employment contract.
I will say that I have worked with Solfeld Griggs before, when I was on the health district. The old North Lincoln Hospital has a lot of people who retired from that, from the old system, before it was Samaritan. And Solfeld Griggs handled all of that, and they were really easy to work with, and very efficient and accurate.
Yeah, one of the, there, I had put in here that their, one of their areas of expertise is executive compensation. And so, I consider you an executive, Josh. So, the next step would be to-
So, do you need a motion to, to send the current and, and proposed agreement to them and, and get a-
Or at least, yeah, a motion to contact them and see if it fits into their willhouse? And if so, then we could give him, give them the contract.
My, my biggest concern, I am all for that. My biggest concern is drawing this out, you know, another two months. So, in your conversation with them, if you could, you know, let them know that we're already past due.
Well, my experience is, because of the size of the firm, they're very expedient.
Terrific.
Yes, and that, they do ask that question, you know, "When do you want this?"
Well, I, I think, I think the main thing is, is that, you know, I mean, two questions I have is that, you know, you know, if we can show them what we currently have, and then ask for what the potential costs are gonna be for putting something together in an expedient manner, then I'd, I'd like to see that happen as soon as possible. I know that we're behind schedule, and I'm concerned about that.
Do we need to, you, you can be authorized to spend X amount of dollars without the board coming back and voting on that in another month, right?
I don't see why we can't do that.
My, it, yeah, I don't think it's gonna, well, it is an attorney, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna be in the thousands of dollars, by no means.
Well, I, I think if we-
Well, so can we approve, like, up to $1,500 without the board coming back to approve?
I, I'm good with that.
Yeah, it's within.
$1,500?
I mean, when I've had contracts written, I mean, it's usually right around $1,500 for a simple contract.
Yeah, so.
Can we make a motion?
Well, the ideal thing is, is not only that you approve this, but who's gonna do the communication? And, you know, that person, once they make the contact, they would sound off to the board on any questions, or we may pass between us a rough draft, which we can pass information, as long as we aren't making a decision.
Yeah, I, I think what we need to do is, this, this would be my thought, is that we need to, it, pass a motion with up to a certain amount that we'd be willing to, to spend, at least find out, and an estimate, and then present the documents to them. We need to then come back as a board and discuss what they put together, and make any changes that we see that maybe weren't communicated well, or whatever, in the process. Then it'll have to go back to them, then, then we talked about having two board members negotiate with Josh.
Right. I won't be that difficult, I promise.
That, that's, that's the process that I think we ought to-
Okay.
So, we're gonna have to have-
So, can we say that again?
So, we're gonna have to have an executive session after we get the contract back from-
Yes, for sure.
And so.
But we can make a motion to, I was just trying to type up a motion here.
I think we need a motion to spend up to 15, contact-
Have Steve contact. Are you comfortable being the contact?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'll take a stab at a motion here. So, I'd like to move to have Board Member Steve Brown contact Solfeld, sorry if I'm pronouncing their name wrong, Griggs, to see if they would engage with us to rewrite our employment contract and authorize up to $1,500 to do that, and have them communicate with you, and you will pass that information to us.
I'll second that.
Any further board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Steve, if you'd do that for us at the earliest possible date, I know that you're-
Leaving town tomorrow, but, yeah. Well, I'll be back on Monday.
Are you, are you capable of doing that?
Yeah.
I mean, is your timeline and everything?
Right.
Okay, great. Okay. All right. Any other new business from the, the board? I have one item.
Okay, go ahead.
If no other board members do, and it's just a question. Josh, I know that in the past, we've had interns, and we've started recruiting them as early as December, January. Didn't know if that was gonna take place. Last year, we had an intern, and it didn't work out very well.
Yeah.
And we never did hear back exactly, at least in a meeting, why that took place. But I know that we planned and budgeted for that to take place in this coming year, and have you thought about how that process is gonna take place?
Generally, I get with Oregon Coast Community College. There's a couple professors that, the science, the Newport campus and the Lincoln City campus, that refer students that they think would be a good fit for internships. Also, in the past, I've, I've put out, I think, a newspaper ad in the News Guard. Unfortunately, not a lot of people apply that really qualify or would really benefit from that. And I don't really know if it's because it's a paid position temporarily, that you get a lot of applicants that are not even students, or necessarily interested in, in the health of the lake, but they're, they're looking for a part-time job, basically. And I don't really think that's exactly what the board desires, as far as an educational component, for having an intern on with the district. So.
I think that, so I have two questions, or a comment. I think that advertising dollars in the News Guard is a waste of time to recruit this type of individual. Most kids don't look in the newspaper for anything. Don't even know what a newspaper is. But secondly, what, what if any follow-up have we had with the Oregon State? I know Tom spent a lot of time trying to cultivate a relationship there, so we would have just a pipeline.
I worked with Tom on that as well, and we actually went to a meeting in Salem. That was a while ago, I can't remember when. But the general consensus was, we don't have the resources to house their students. They want us to provide transportation, which means 15-passenger vans, dedicated drivers, places to overnight the students, just things that are not within our, our cost and budgeting timeframe for that type of position. Furthermore, many of the departments did not see a good fit for the lake with their current programs and research.
Oh, okay. Darn.
Yeah, I don't know where Oregon State is with regard to their Newport campus.
They're in the process of-
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you know, there, there are some other options, too. Dr. Sitzma works at Portland State Campus, and we've had some really good contact with him, and he's helped us out throughout the years, and, and me as well, in my management of the district, as far as our aquatic vegetation, and a lot of our questions there. And I just recently went up to the Oregon Lakes Association Conference a couple months ago, and kinda mentioned to him that we may, may be doing that again, and may ask him if he's got anybody to recommend. And he seemed pretty open to that, so I'll, I'll get ahold of him and see if maybe PSG might have something.
And I would consider housing somebody, because it is, I mean, it's difficult to find full-time housing here, let alone, I don't know how many weeks we're looking at, 10 weeks?
It's whatever we want it to be.
Well, yeah, historically, it's been 15 weeks.
15 weeks, yeah.
I, I mean, I would be more than happy to consider, you know, housing somebody that needed housing. I have extra room, so.
Great.
I have one thing.
Okay.
And it's kind of a silly thing. I hate our agendas.
This is the ones you guys gave me.
Let me just start this really softly. Is there any way that we can change the template or the format of these to be more conducive to, here's what we're working on, here's what we're gonna be working on?
Well, since, since agenda are that prolific in, in all parts of society, I will find some varying templates and email them out to the board, kinda take a peek at them and get a consensus. And if we find a format that we like-
I mean, do you like this?
No, I didn't make this one. I, I just, I just continued it on.
Right.
No, it, I don't think for the way we, our projects and programs and everything we have moving on right now, that they're very concise. I think we can condense them and make them more effective.
Great.
Well, the other, the other thing, I think Steve had a good idea. We need to, you know, if we look back at, however, what our discussions are from month to month, and then look back at what our projects are, and have status reports on each of those things that come up. Sometimes, I think, in our discussion has been that, all of a sudden, we don't know what's happening.
Well, I, I refer to it as action items.
Action items.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, I, you know, in every meeting, there's something that comes out that, that needs to be followed up. And the audience sees that, too. And I think part of the reporting structure has to be where we at on those action items. You know, how many have we crossed off, or we've done, or whatever. So, I don't know if you had had a, that template, or I kinda drew out one a while back for you. You know, that's a format that I've used in the past at board meetings, but I think it's a good idea that we look at templates, so that we can, I think, just be more effective.
I agree. I think that's it.
Do that. So, plan on maybe testing a new one out in January's board meeting?
Yeah, and actually having the discussion, how it worked out. That would be great.
Sound good?
Sounds very good.
Gotta keep new.
Gotta keep it fresh.
Yeah, and another thing that I have, I was going through my old notes, and last year, you put out a budget calendar. Can you put that on your agenda, too? You know, the monuments that we're hitting, you know, for the budget?
Just don't, don't even remind me that it's coming up.
It is coming up.
Well, I, I believe that next month, we need to appoint a budget officer.
Yes, well, if it's consistent with the last year, yeah, there was a budget officer appointed in January.
Who might that be?
Wait till January.
It'll be a surprise.
I'm sure it will. Okay.
And thank you for getting this report together on the aeration project. So, is this final?
Uh, that, no, we still have the fencing and soundproofing to add into that.
Okay.
So, which should, that should be the last major construction component.
And there's a couple things that I, I looked at that probably need to be put on, you know, it's the Airstream that, you know, the connection to Vivian's, and that, that, those prices, those really go somewhere else, because-
Yeah, yeah, and, and we do have a budget line item to contain those. I'll, I'll work with Teresa and try and get that, get that taken care of.
Yeah, we should have an Airstream account number for her.
Yeah, and-
To keep the two aerators separate.
Well, and, and we will, now that we're, we're taking this on, and we'll know what the costs are as far as the operations of, of the large unit, and when we've kinda wrapped our heads around what the operations of the shoreline is, we need to make another separate line item in the budget as we move forward to the next budget year, so we can definitely get that described out and anticipate those costs as we move forward.
And, and then, I know you sent me a note about our meeting on Monday, but-
Yeah, Tuesday.
Or Tuesday. Okay, will you make sure that I know before then again, soon, please?
Yeah, we're just doing a housekeeping thing on Tuesday at TLC, getting the signers on the account cleaned up, and so, that's what that meeting's for.
Any other new business, old business? Comments from the audience? Yes? Chester?
Good evening, honorable, good evening, honorable directors and lake manager. Thank you for your time and energy, and the energy you contribute to improving, improving the health of our lake. The completion of the aeration project is a terrific accomplishment. Bravo. The Flowing Garden Project has been successful and is another beneficial influence on the health of the lake. Bravo again. Thinking of turtles and pursuing them is most creative and exciting. Thank you.
Great.
I feel my tax money that goes to the district is being well-spent. Thank you all for your work on our behalf. P.S., action items on the agenda, I think, would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Chester.
Thanks, Chester.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I know Chester sits in the back of the room and doesn't say much most of the time, and thank you, Chester, for coming forward and saying something.
He listens, though.
Yes, very good. All right. Are there any other comments from the board? All right. Well, thank you all for coming.
Merry Christmas.
And I hope you have a good holiday.
And Happy New Year.
Again, if you'd like to volunteer on any of our committees or on road cleanup, we're happy to see new volunteers. This, this board does not work by five board members and staff. It takes a whole community to get involved, and we appreciate everybody who has been involved in the past and will be involved in the future. So with that, we're adjourned.
To all a good night.
I have a feeling I have to go home and write an appendix or something. Well, it'll still be fine. It's, you know, it's funny because it was, I'm trying to get that audio part, but he's like, just like 30 years from now, and you'll have the story that almost every college student has. So I see, I told Steve...